And now I'm reading out it should be able to hear my speaker. And the speakers, so there's feedback.
Wendy, are you taking minutes? Or is Jeff coming? And then Kristy is on Zoom, so. Bevan, Kristy, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Great.
For anyone who didn't get enough sugar yesterday, there's all the leftovers. Don't be shy. We won't get too far. And it's six o'clock. We'll call to order this evening's November first meeting.
Plaguing these with a flag from the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, for coming around, community, this one, liberty and justice for all.
So our first item is any public comment that anybody would like to make. You're invited to step up to the podium, just introduce yourself and state where you're a resident of Wabashaw. You're a resident and let council know what you'd like to share with us.
I see you, Uncle Buckman. I'm not a resident, but on property at three month school, Florence Boulevard here in Wabashaw. But I just want to maybe comment the intent of my nature there. And the city is, thank you first off for your control of me working through the process of planning for the Metropolis. And I just wanted to draw some attention to the bathroom facilities. I just believe and my neighbor would agree with me that there's potential to close bathroom facilities somewhere closer to the bridge. I draw attention to like the bike parking area is, I think as a result will make it use more. Through the events that you guys have underneath the bridge and just by the people that park there and the different biking areas that you have there. So if you consider that in the planning, that you go down, we appreciate it.
Thanks and good timing. We'll be talking about some of that tonight. Any other public comments? I hear the thing, but I don't think, I think it's just one o'clock now. I bet you're not here. All right, hearing no further public comment. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda by staff or through the council? Or do we want to do?
No, hold on.
Let's, there was an item, a question, and I know Katie can answer it, related to item consent agenda, item eight, 10. So let's pull that if we can and add it to general business. If do you want to wait till the end there?
Point five.
Yeah, we'll redo that. 10, 1.5, it's related to that item. That makes sense. We want to keep it. All right. As for presentation from me, it's a beautiful night. I'm sorry to keep you here. We'll try to be efficient in our business, but it's been really wonderful to have the great weather. Thanks for the exceptionally well-run public engagement under the bridge. For everybody involved and all members of council and the public that were part of the planning process. It was really great to see everybody convening around that topic. We had the perks planned for us tonight. And I got a lot of thank yous from citizens for that kind of work. So really appreciated that.
Get to that.
Okay, good. Friday was waistwaters. I like it. Friday was. Yeah, but it's next, it's next. So thank you to all of our first responders. I know the city put something out on Facebook. And now, this is not my, this is not my doing, but I can refer to a real treat here. A really big thanks to Pat and Lisa and Matt and sure other public works folks were involved in our wastewater treatment plant. This is not smell-o-vision, so for any of you that weren't able to participate in real life, it's even more exciting when you're really there at the plant. But I think. And the high school outdoor environmental science class also attended. I think that whole class attended. And according to Pat, like a good third of them were even engaged, which for any high school audience, I think is a huge success. So good job getting those students informed about that engineering and the public works side of career opportunities. And thanks to Lisa for the infographic, which says, remember to only flush the three Ps, toilets are not trash cans. And you can see tour of the plant, some people really don't understand that. There's cheeto wrappers and all kinds of exciting things that are being flushed down the toilet. So good public service from everybody involved. Tomorrow, Tuesday, tomorrow at the library, we're having a childcare appreciation event starting at 5:30. If anybody who's ever been the beneficiary of childcare, which is a lot of people, to come and say hi. We don't know which providers will and will not be able to be there, but just to show your support for childcare in general. Our true business has been positively impacted by childcare. Ben Strand, who serves the Port Authority, is going to talk about that one last, that is one more opportunity for a new childcare business to receive a substantial grant. And just get to know people. And we're just really happy to kind of wrap up the work that's been done over the last three and a half years. That I think has done exactly what we needed to do, which is make sure we aren't just looking at new childcare providers, but also resilience of existing providers. So that's exciting. There'll be cookies and then the providers only are going to go and have a little reception at Press Street. I just put this in here just to keep people up to date. We keep working on section two seventeen D with, with the Army Corps. And Caroline maybe wants to say a little bit more about that. We don't have any real substantial new information, except that they're working on all the contracts with Mike Thirdey. So thank you to everybody who's running for office, for county office. Thanks Rob and everybody else running for school board. There was a panel moderated by Rob Anlin, who's our new Wabashaw County Herald editor. That was really well-attended. I thought he very engaged last week and the library was a great host for that. So don't forget to vote Tuesday at the fair hall. And one last note, I'm encouraged, I didn't do this in the years past because I knew that the schools were so overwhelmed by COVID. But I reached out to both schools to inquire whether there was an interest in the mayor for the day essay, which the league of the city hosts. It's really great if you get that, you know, City Magazine, that essay recipient, I think they're usually on the cover. But I know they went a hundred bucks and it's a great feature. I enjoy reading it every single time. And so I showed the kids that it's a possibility, whether they want to do it as an individual or if their teachers want to get involved. And I've got some advocates at the schools working to see if the classrooms want to do it as a group. So that's fun. And that's all from me. And we'll take committee reports. I'll start with Brian.
Yeah, two things that are actually on the consent agenda. The utility commission member that's on for approval, Joshua, the mayor turned me on to him and I called him, had a nice conversation with him. He seems real motivated, young guy, lives out in Eagle Basin, works for Midco. So he's got some sort of utilities background and just the fact that someone wants to do it is a, is a positive note. So I just thought I'd mention that about him. The second thing is the critical water deficiency. I guess it's only first reading, but we went through this three times in our utility commission before we approved it. It was really, I guess restrictive, just the language just didn't seem right. The state basically wanted to come in your house and turn all your water off. And so we just massaged the language around until we were comfortable with it. And it's something we want to pass because grant funding may, and may have a direct impact on that if we were to just refuse to do it. So that's it.
Good, quarter thirty, John?
Quarter thirty, nothing.
But we'll be.
Yeah, the first, excuse me, third, who's here, everyone?
And Tony, you want to get us on parks and streets in whatever order you choose.
Evening, everyone. We bucked off two cap trading, which is a street commission for agenda. And that went through, was best time two days tonight. And then we accepted only, only winter snow that we had for all in snow, sent it out to two contractors. We received one there, small increase in price, but not without the ordinary. And we had a site finding issue with the grant. Boulevard and a big alley down by bike's park. So Robert Yoder is going to trim off some of the courses in the front and we're going to check the curve next year and see if we need some more yellow to help apartment. Parks, we reviewed the parks, trails plan with the steering group and park board is here. So that's going to be working tonight. And then we talked about any seat dock and what to do with that. And originally, when I was talking with the contractor, they were going to scrap them and cut like gainway in half. And I was like, no. So we got the seat in there, the ramp out, save it. And then the dock is removed, I just park for now. So we're going to kind of think, oh, it's still usable. Maybe it's going to be additional fishing dockage in the slough. We can put it out of the way in that spark and then we can use the ramp and save it for a while.
Great. Do you want to point out the vehicle out there?
Oh, that's, so we received the Zoom power truck. We're waiting for the main pile to get dropped off. Yeah, but trucks here, we had a little trouble with that fuel sensor, which is always new stuff on vehicles. So we went to pick it up and we made it down the road five miles an hour. The same, right? Turn around, go back and so the dealer took care of that and then they dropped it off. So, but it's here for you to look at afterwards. Turn the lights on, get that up and so, hey, is anybody's interested in checking out?
I don't know if I'm ready to see a plow let out for you.
So we have a single axle and we have a bigger truck. We have the T-100, that's two thousand seven. And then we have the one ton, which is a smaller orange truck. Both of the three main, other than the back outs and the loader.
And this is.
This one's for the east side of town. Pretty much everything from Pembroke this way, the cannon is for the west side and up top hill. And then the one ton is used downtown for loader. So yeah, I think those ones is going to make a heck of a change. Nice to have, good work anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Planning.
So we reviewed, approved the fish trail rezon and preliminary plot, which I believe is on for second read today. And then approved our short-term rental ordinance, which I believe we have a first read today. And then we just discussed a little bit more details of the small and mid, so more to that.
Thank you. Jonathan, I got so excited because I knew we had action on this, but forgot to let you get presentation. We usually do that at the top and please join us. We've had so much action on this item. Some of the council have been very engaged, lots of the public, a lot of public involvement. And this won't be new for some, I don't know if it's new for anybody.
I think this presentation is new for anyone who hasn't gone to a parks meeting.
Okay, great.
I can, I can click through if you need me to, if it doesn't work, so.
Yeah. Well, good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me here. Talk about our master plan. Wanted to start out. Just wanted to start out by acknowledging a few planning efforts that have been undertaken frequently by the city that kind of helped to inform the master plan process. Those are the 2016 town plan and parks and trails survey that was associated with that. Twenty nineteen park system, ADA compliance review. Twenty twenty-one, saferous to school survey. And then the additional parks and trails public survey that was completed in twenty twenty-one. So all these, all these efforts kind of really helped to, helped to direct the outcomes of the parks and trails master plan process. So looking at the process, we really kind of followed this five-step process for the, for the master plan. Started out by kind of analyzing the existing facilities that the city has as far as parks and trails. Inventorying those facilities. And then we moved into the public outreach process, really engaging with users of these facilities and developing understanding of kind of the needs, wants and desires of those groups. How the system can best serve those users. From there, we moved into analysis, used a few tools and techniques to kind of look for deficiencies within the parks and trail system. And then from there, developing improvement recommendations to try to address some of those deficiencies. And lastly, review and wrap up, kind of presenting our findings to the end users, the public, and all the steering committees, city staff and park board and then the city council. Really, the purpose of the master plan document, and it's kind of defined in the document itself, is to provide a framework for the city of Wabashaw. To enhance existing park and trail facilities and identify future expansion and enhancement opportunities to meet the community's current and future recreational needs. So these are just a few figures, kind of talking about the inventory process that we undertook. So a lot of this actually was done previously in 2016. And we kind of, as part of this effort, we kind of took a look at those, reviewed the facilities again, just to make sure everything was up to date. So for each park in the city, we have a map that shows kind of where the different locations are. A chart that kind of identifies the total size of the park, land cover, different amenities on the sites. And then utility, utilities available on sites, some history associated with the sites. And then we kind of aggregated all that into an overall chart to see, you know, the numbers and types of facilities that the city has. We also did some analysis looking at, so these figures show a level of service analysis. So that's one tool that we use to try to identify some deficiencies within the existing park system as far as coverage areas for those parks. These figures show a quarter mile, half mile walking radiuses to the parks, which is about five to 10 mile walking radius for five to 10 minutes, excuse me. The figure on the left shows park, overall park service area. And those are, those include community and neighborhood park facilities. And then on the right, we're looking at playgrounds specifically. So the areas in the right are kind of those deficient areas that are currently underserved by those types of facilities. We also wanted to consider flood resiliency. So obviously the, you know, the river and the slough are tremendous assets for the city of Wabashaw. It also could be a liability as far as flooding. So a huge chunk of the city is, you know, within the 100 year and 500 year floodplain. So green is the 100 year, red is the 500 year. So we just wanted to be cognizant of that as we're developing recommendations and looking at, you know, where some of that infrastructure might go in the future to make sure money is being spent wisely and we're not putting big-ticket items into that floodplain that could be potentially damaged. And then the other thing we looked at was how Wabashaw compares to national statistics and trends as far as parks and track facilities. So every year, the National River Park Association releases some metrics that can help kind of compare different communities to each other. See how you stand, stand up against other communities of similar size. Some of the key takeaways we got from this was as far as trail facilities, Wabashaw is right there. It's in line with the median of communities less than 20,000 with about three miles of trails. And then as far as park facilities, Wabashaw actually has more parks than most communities of similar size itself. And that's kind of defined by park acres for 1,000 residents. So when we're looking at recommendations, we want to be cognizant that we're not adding additional land to the park system without accounting for that and reducing it somewhere else. Certainly not only overburdening the public works staff anymore than they already are. So and then on the right, again, kind of looking at specific facility within the park system and how and the numbers of those facilities that Wabashaw have to be aligned to national standards. And a lot of the deficiencies that we've identified, we've taken care of with the athletic park relocation. So kind of moving in the right direction there. Specifically talking about that, you know, the amount of acreage of parks. Looking at the athletic park relocation, and this is one of the projects that's really going to help in that area. The current athletic park is about 16.2 acres. And the area that's going to be dedicated to that, those uses at the new site is about 7.6 acres. So we're really reducing the amount of parkland in the long term by about 8.6 acres with just this project specifically. As that former athletic field kind of shifts to an alternate use. And then the other project that addresses this is, so looking at Cannon Park. So this, this facility is typically used kind of as a passive recreation park. It houses the cannon feature. Beyond that, it doesn't get a lot of use. So one of the recommendations was to relocate the cannon to the veterans park. And then look at selling this property and eliminating it from the park system. This is about 0.7 acres of land total for this park. So again, that would be a reduction in the overall parkland of about 0.7 acres.
And I will add that, that's in the plan. Obviously, we don't have intermittent plans, so we can discuss it. In speaking internally, we know that some residents have strong intentions of the cannon itself, but not necessarily the park is how we understand it. So.
Okay, so shifting to input gathering and engagement. So looking at the 2021 public survey, this is a, this was a pretty good chunk of data that we were able to use to kind of help inform our decision-making process. I think in total, there were about 260 surveys completed. So again, a good chunk. So that's, that's really good for a community of this size. You don't usually see response rates that high. So it's a good job that everybody who helped with that effort. So looking, and as part of that, we took that data, we kind of aggregated it into two categories. So what people want, what needs to approve and kind of identify the top priorities for folks. So what people want, the top priorities were bike walking trails, dog park, athletics, sport courts and playground facilities. And then what needs to improve were playground equipment, playground facilities, restrooms and let's see, docks. So pretty good mix of, mix of things identified. But again, that definitely helped to inform some of our recommendations. The other input opportunity we had was at Septoberfest, there was a pumpkin interview. We had a pop-up event where we presented materials from actually four different planning efforts currently underway, including the Parks and Trail Master Plan. And as part of that, we had folks kind of vote on different boards in terms of what their top priorities were and what projects they were most excited about. And the results of that are on the right here, the top vote getter was all of those inclusive playground. Followed by the athletic park relocation, campground at Marku Park, Wabashaw and Kellon Trail Connection. And then just general trail connectivity and enhanced pedestrian connectivity. And then lastly, the new neighborhood park along River Drive. So recommendations coming out of the master plan, really broken into four categories. So we have park system-wide recommendations, we have location-specific park recommendations. Trail system and pedestrian safety recommendations and then opportunity-driven recommendations. So first, looking at the first system-wide recommendation was to increase distribution of land use throughout the community. And a few specific projects that were identified to help with this goal were the addition of a playground at Eagle Basin Park. The addition of a basketball court at Ruder Park. And then future development of a neighborhood park along River Drive South. The second system-wide goal was to increase diversity of amenities. So a few items related to this, the addition of an inclusive all-balance playground. This was identified first, men park, dog park. The top location identified for this was my food park. Similarly for a campground at Marku Park. And then lastly, something to consider for future is mountain biking and hiking trails and the blocks near the ski hill. Third, system-wide goal, improve accessibility to the clients. So these are kind of big things, just looking at making sure that the system as a whole functions and is accessible to all users. First item was replacement of deficient sidewalks and trails. Upgrades to existing restroom facilities, enhancement and upkeep of playground access and servicing. And then lastly, improvements at the pool, specifically installation of lift chair, locker room improvements and potential installation of adaptive swing at the playground. And then number four, enhanced and expanded recreational trail system. So generally fill gaps in trail connectivity throughout the community. And then a few other specific trail connection recommendations that fit to here. So then looking at location-specific recommendations for each of the parks within the community. We identified between two and five recommendations based on feedback from the city steering committee and the public. These recommendations are prioritized in short, mid and long-term goals. Short being one to three years, midterm being three to seven years and long-term being ten or seven plus years. The figure on the left is an example of those recommendations from Ruder Park. So a few of the recommendations there, short-term, planting a few additional jin trees. Midterm, looking at relocating sand volleyball courts from the current athletic park. And then long range, looking at adding a basketball court. Another example from Malone Park, so short range, looking at replacing some of the deficient sidewalks and trails, something with those ADA compliant. Shifting the playground location further, so it's a little higher in elevation, reduce some of the flooding potential. Updating the restroom facilities. And then as part of the plans for Marku Park, looking at opportunities to relocate the spell course. Looking at trails and pet safety specifically, as part of this, the recommendations here, there are four priority trail connections identified. In addition to an enhanced pedestrian crossing on Hiawatha and expanded sidewalk connectivity throughout the community. And I was just going to touch on three of those priority trail connections quickly, just to give you an idea of those. The first one is kind of the west end of town, near the west of town, Old Home Park, between Hiawatha and Seventh Street. Really what we're trying to do is fill like a gap in the trail system here by providing a trail connection. There's two different alignments provided here, the red one and the yellow one. One kind of works within existing city of right-of-way. The other kind of would require some coverage acquisition to get south of the old home park. The trail connection B is within Isaac Walton Park. So it looks to fill a gap in that trail connectivity between Malone and the existing trail across the slough to Beach Park. And then lastly, trail connection C is really looking at creating a larger trail connection along the slough between Marku Park up to Hiawatha to, to create that connection up to Isaac Walton, Malone and Beach Park, as well as the rest of the downtown. Looking at pedestrian safety, so as part of the 2021 saferous to school survey, one of the big things that came out of that was just a general unease about people crossing Hiawatha to get to the school. Just feeling like the crossing was unsafe. There's some, you know, changes in speed limits and things in that area. Just some concern about safety of folks crossing. So looking at, at, as a recommendation, installing a enhanced crossing with an RRFP. Which is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's a fancy terminology, it's got these flashing lights and so basically users come up and push the button, the lights activate and it's. so basically users come up and push the button, the lights activate, and it's up. It's very effective in stopping traffic and creating a safer crossing for both. And then the other recommendation for pet safety was just enhancing sidewalk connectivity throughout the community. So it'd be more of a long-term recommendation that would be implemented in conjunction with street reconstruction projects as they come up, other infrastructure projects. Just kind of looking to fill gaps in the sidewalk system, as well as provide some of those larger connections. This, this one on the south side, we recall, for example, has been identified as a priority connection. Integral to moving pedestrians to the community. Lastly, we have the opportunity-driven projects, so the image here is from the downtown riverfront plaza project, this was something that was developed as part of the downtown streetscape plan effort. But is also recognized in the Parks and Trails Master Plan as a future opportunity. These opportunity-driven projects, they don't really have a timeline associated with them, nor funding, so these would really be dependent on outside funding sources or donations to facilitate some of these improvements. But the other one is mountain biking and riding trails near the ski hill, so. City doesn't currently own any land over there, it would really come down to working with landowners, seeing if there's willingness to have these facilities on their property for, you know, to help facilitate development of these facilities. Last one, I just, I want to go back to the athletic park relocation, so this was, this has been underway, you know, since prior to the master plan process, but this is just a really good example of a great parks outlook for the city. So the total for the project is just under one point nine million, but the city did secure a grant for about three hundred dollars to help facilitate that construction. And that is slated for construction in twenty twenty-three. And there are some, some items that aren't included in that contract, such as the wall field lighting. As, and the skate park construction that would be identified as future donation opportunities or outside funding source opportunities. So those are things that, you know, with a lot of these projects, it's going to come down to, you know, help from the community as a whole to help facilitate some of these, and I think, did you want to kind of?
Tell us the next one, financing strategy, so I think it's like, some of the feedback we've gotten is, wow, this is a bit overwhelming, there's a lot of projects, we are struggling to fund what we can, so. The financing strategy is, you know, I, Tony and I can use this plan and the cost estimating to help be included in our ten-year capital plan. So we've already included some of these projects in the ten-year capital plan, but I didn't really have real dollar figures, so that's was going to be extremely helpful for us. And kind of my approach to the ten-year capital plan is, you know, we put it in there as a goal, and as you know, we get to budget crunch time and things continue to get pushed out, but at least stays in the list, so we can continue our conversation, hey, okay, I guess this is not the year that we can do, you know, the half-court basketball, but let's push it out a year and keep it on the list, so. This is going to be hugely helpful now for our budget planning. And then we get asked about grants all the time, so this helps, you know, slot different projects and the grants. The all abilities playground and the dog park projects, I think emerged as a lot of interest from the community, so that's where I think we're going to need more public-private philanthropy led by a small steering committee. Em and I have conversations a lot that getting that group together and finding that local leader who can push it forward is critical, but sometimes challenging. But Jess and I have a lot of discussions, she knows the dog park community advocates as well. And we, we talk, you know, maybe that could be led by a small group. Of the trail improvements are already in our capital borrowing plan, as was the athletic field. And then the sidewalks, again, that's going to maybe come through street improvement projects or small capital requests if we can fit them in. And then finally, the plan provides a guide, but not everything will be accomplished, so we always say, like, our approach with the wastewater treatment plant was, you know, we're going to be happy if four people showed up and we had thirty. And so we'll be really happy, I think, if we accomplish fifty percent of what's in here, but maybe we'll exceed those goals. And the important part for lots of citizen engagement is to make sure that we understood what people cared about, and I think something that emerged was biking and walking connections and, you know, the dog park, which I still think we have maintenance concerns, but we did ask the consultants, like, hey, could you give us some ideas about how we could gate it, license it, have a user fee, and so they've included some high-level ideas. On the Marku campground, Wendy already brought up, like, it's in the floodplain, and I think we would need to dig into it. I don't see that as any time, but that could be a revenue-generating resource that could pay for itself, so. That's it.
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Craig.
The two hundred and eighty thousand dollar fee for the engineering on the park over here. Is that part of one point nine nine, does that add to one point nine?
That's part of it, yep.
I have one other question.
We have that same question, that's why we pulled it, we knew Katie would answer that, so, yeah, go ahead, we're all thinking the same.
This gentleman brought up the location of the proposed location of the proposed restroom. So I've also heard other people bring that up to me. And they're opposed to the, to the idea of putting it down on the old Lawrence Hall or. I'm wondering, what about Popcorn Park, how would that get in, it seemed like that was a little bit easy.
Yeah, so that was really decided as part of the downtown streetscape plan process. But I think generally, the, the feeling was that the area along Lawrence was closer to where the large community events occur, as well as it would be usable by trail users along the riverfront. So that's kind of where that, that decision came from.
I'm thinking we should probably rethink that before we move ahead.
Well, I mean, I don't think it was ever thoroughly debated whether it should be under the bridge in the parking area, or just under the bridge next to the trail, and I think it's, it's fact, there's value in both.
Yeah.
But I can see your point also, yeah, Katie, what do you recall from that?
Idea, an idea.
One thing with the location, the fact that we are going to have to consider is the fact that there is a main dock right of way under the bridge. And speaking with Mindot, we get their feedback on streetscape and kind of that concept, and you need permanent improvement will have to be up side of Mindot right of way. So I can play the current concept, John, as it's shown sort of to the west, if you will.
Yeah.
And so that location was selected in the area of the.
Sure, that makes sense, I recall that now, yeah. But Popcorn Park was debated, as was a small site adjacent to the library, and based on, too small, based on general use and, you know, location utilities. None of them were bad options, it just seemed like the trail proximity and sort of that festival plaza proximity.
Yeah, probably, I think it's that it's near a lot of private residents. That's the objections.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a few.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
It's me, I'm, I'm for a campground and all that, but I don't know, twelve years ago, we were looking at putting a campground down at Marku Park, and the effect was a change in state law regulations that prohibited us from putting it, but I know that was, has been brought up to the state, different from floodplain general, Mystic River, what's right, solely work by the water, directly. Has that changed that or?
Was that looked into, John, or do we need to investigate that further?
I think it would need further investigation, I, I tried to dig into any requirements associated with floodplains, I didn't see anything, but I know you brought up Caroline, that there has been definitely some concerns about that.
Absolutely, the department over.
Okay.
I think there's some covenants on that part as well.
Yeah, the, the Marco family put a deep restriction on their command to that park, that if it ever was not a park, that they would get the property back, and I think they actually objected to the idea of campground instead of a park. And so that just put the brakes on it right there, as far as floodplain. They are doing remapping, but it's still going to fall in the one hundred year floodplain, but it's, it's the fringe area where you're allowed to fill, so.
There was a few exchanges as well, so.
Yeah, then there are going to be restrictions on that.
Oh, with the changes across the street.
That's on the, yeah.
On the west side, yeah.
Okay, yeah, right across where the old heat up house was. So, yeah, but I mean, you needed an engineer to fill it and dredge sand or whatever. I think it was what I found there.
My second question was, you brought up sidewalks, connectivity sidewalks. And I know at twenty, we have a pretty old commoner flat here, and it was my understanding that your role as CEO said that it was then you would probably go on that sidewalk for the win, when may recall that?
I don't believe that's a rule from what we looked at.
I don't think so either, because.
What was it, what about the public improvement policies?
It's, not to my knowledge, because when it was done in front of my house, it was left up to residents, and same with Twelfth Street, and nobody wanted it, so they left it out, so.
After Twelfth Street, right?
I realize that, not that I know of, there's any restrictions.
Oh, we should look into that. I know one of the, the body development, we, you have a sidewalk on there.
Christie, that's sort of, oh, she's a, Christie, maybe that could be looked in as part of Fitzgerald's that, the requirement of sidewalks. Do you want the Marku Park campground recommendation taken out or just investigated further?
Well, I think it can be left in, I don't think it's a problem, I just think it might be, but, I mean, there's a number of times.
Wayne was at our pop-up event, and it just sounded like they just wanted it to be named Marku Park.
Maybe they've changed their mind.
So.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, just lastly, a lot of work went into this, and.
Just lastly, don't forget to thank the statewide health improvement partnership, yeah, on this, which was really great. This is a big grant, they don't always give grants this big, I'm on the review, first I wasn't on, I didn't get to review this one, but when we, when cities, annual city, Plainview worked on a planning process, and there was fifteen thousand dollar request, and we really had to do a great, whether that was a good use of funds, because there's so many applicants for those limited ship dollars, so really appreciate that, we've been at, Craig and myself for sure have been at the table with Jeff, this loves Tony and Caroline for a very long time, trying to figure out how to really well utilize ship dollars, and this is is a good, a very good tool to help us move in the right direction, otherwise we work without, we work without a plan, we don't really know what is priority, so. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have some agenda.
From Sam, Sam Croft, our, the community development director is here.
As part of my report, as a part of your report, as I was going to say, the new guest speaker will take you either way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I will be brief in my comments, but I appreciate your time, which is going to be. I'm the new community development director, Nick Corbin. So I'm just down the street from City Hall, and I get to talk to Caroline now a little bit more frequently than I did. But I'm here tonight to share some exciting news, and some that I'm working on. Whileishaw was in the area, they live over a few miles, three blocks away, within the target area, and so they've been papering the kind of neighborhood, and having a good job, and hasn't been able to successfully do it. So we went back to our D partners, and were questioning if they would be willing to expand the target area. And to this as well, we have several examples following, especially, but they were. So we should put them on the list, and say, well, we're trying to help them. Hopefully we can reach back out, so D gave the hours to eliminate that targeted, and then also, as part of the areas, there was just a board meeting for the community, we talked to them, and kind of going into this process, we had like a similar kind of competitive piece that they were hoping would work. And they just haven't had a response, so D came back and said, we're willing to waive that restriction, so now residents can actually get up to twenty-five thousand dollars with no words match. So it would be a potentially variable load or grant, so that's exciting, this, so we're excited to hit the ground running and start that up. So I did bring a press release that I submitted to the Arrow, and then we are also working on different brochures that we'll be sending out, and she had some of the information out there, so we're excited to get to working on this and close this actually.
And Nick was, is the city, was the city administrator for St. Charles. Long time there, he mentored me this past year, I'm so grateful. And now, as the community development director, I just think we, this is great, and then we are going to work on other projects together. But this is an awesome program, and having them lift the restrictions, I mean, as you can see, the income requirements, a household's of three making less than sixty-four thousand a year, that's, they're pretty high, that's a moderate income household. And it, it's roofs, it's insulation, plumbing, health, safety, roofing siding, and just in the city of Wabashaw, but next year is the deadline to extend, so we're hoping to have Jessica and Lisa train to answer questions, and hopefully you two as our ambassadors, just to say, it's a legitimate program, it's not a scam, the city of Wabashaw is very involved, so, yeah.
Great, and I cruised through the, the original project area, and there's been a little bit of activity, have any projects been completed with this funding?
We have three that actually, five that are working on, we're taking bids in for one project right now, so we should be studying that probably.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that was kind of one of the popcorn facts.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Versus starts, you know.
Yes, definitely, great, any questions, Bernadette? Thanks so much.
I will be back actually in the summer.
Oh, yes.
Sounds good, all right, see you then. Feel free to enjoy evening, yeah, thanks. All right, and we got a little out of order here, so now we have Caroline's full report.
Okay, I know we're, people are getting antsy, so just a few highlights. It was first responders day on Friday, and so we just have a press release that we did with toggle pictures above, just celebrating our hometown heroes, and I was able to pull some stories and quotes together from Joe and Darren and Ryan, our ambulance director, and then I'm thinking the Wabashaw Herald will publish it, but if you can just share that, our Facebook, and just, again, just thanking them for all the work they do. And they are heroes, and I guess I didn't really appreciate it till I took this job, and I hear the calls come in, and I got to see a training, and so just so grateful, and then Austin Burt is our new part-time EMT. And then just the rest of the report, which you could read online, just is showing us we're making significant measurable progress in our strategic plan, so the green Xs is where we're we're moving ahead. And so that's exciting, that's all.
Very exciting, thank you. All right, and we can hear consent agenda, which is all the items except eight, ten, which you kind of heard the answer to that question, but nevertheless, it's smooth. We have approval of Austin, the part-time EMT role, first read of the draft short-term rental arguments. The ten-four city council minutes, the minutes for our special ten-twenty-five meeting, the warrants for November, the gambling permit application for WK Booster Club for the funders for the prom, the, that one. Oh, right, of course, the utilities commission, Josh Wendt, being willing to serve in that role. And our housing study contract, which will be metored by StanTech with the leadership of the Port Authority and the Housing Committee. First reading of the chapter fifty-two critical water deficiency. Twenty twenty-three athletic park relocation project work order, that's the one that's told, excuse me, criminal justice center lease for twenty twenty-three with the clarification from staff on the item that Craig asked about last month. The approval of a brush dump camera and the property tax assessments, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll, I'll second.
The motion from Brian, I think I heard the second, Tim. Very good. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, um, no public hearing tonight. Under general business, we have our parks and trails master plan, so this is where we take action. Um, we did add that item, whatever it is, eight, one point five. So the question was, and Katie probably heard it, was the, was that, um. Uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars insulting cost, uh, in addition to the one point nine million dollar project budget that's included. And then Brian and I were asking, just you can educate us on how that is estimated. Just so we're understanding kind of the elements of the project budget.
So, uh, you are correct, and we asked it earlier, the two hundred and eighty, just part of the one point nine million. Um, typically, um, estimating some of those costs based on construction costs and then we, as we prepare your work orders. We also look at the effort that's going to need to hold the plans and specs together. Um, so it's kind of a combination of effort and, um, using that percentage of construction cost.
And if you look at the item that was in the consent agenda prior, if you want to click on it right now, it shows that sometimes I'm not to exceed. Any other questions for Katie on that question coming out now? Okay, then before us, we have this item summary. Um, so this is the, um, overall plan, includes the strategies that were outlined in, uh, the presentation by Jonathan. And if you have any other further items for discussion, they're both Katie and Jonathan, both still here with us, otherwise we can entertain, um.
And this is the actual plan and that didn't get on the agenda, so, but it is linked online and we're gonna upload it online. It's basically what Jonathan. Discussed in much, much more detail for every single part.
There's even an updated version of, I think, in the, in the item that Jonathan presented in the, in the presentation item on your agenda. You can click the other link. It's the full plan. It's updated with the photos and.
Okay, so.
Because somebody probably read this, this version while you attended the last public meeting.
Okay.
So yes, this would be the, the adoption of the plan itself. And as everyone's described it, it's a work and planning document. Uh, it's not a, it's not a, uh, project list. Do you have any? We have a motion to approve from Brian and a second from Dean. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Thank you. Again, it's a lot of work, a lot of engagement, and we look forward to trying to execute it. Um, some other. General business, we have the Bobcat tool trade, uh, Bobcat tool cat trade-in.
Okay, uh. Bobcat tool cat, it provides all of our maintenance for sidewalk, um, in some parking lots in the winter, uh, during the summer. It's on the road just about every day until the garden become more with it. Um, you know, it's got forks, uh, it's got the stump grinder. It runs a lot of attachments of a regular Bobcat or, or, um. Like a skid loader run. Um, so. It's, it's a heavily used piece of equipment and with all the things that this unit has, it's, it's very touchy compared to a skid loader. So, um, the maintenance costs on it. And I, did you get that email that I sent you?
Yeah, it turned out to be about three thousand dollars a year or four years, but there was nothing that jumped out like. Actually, I was expecting replacement. I was kind of, for a trend where it would be constant and then all of a sudden jump up, but there was, it's been constant about three grand a year.
Plus the tires. I didn't have any tires.
And also that those numbers were those based on just repair costs or was it maintenance and repair? Because you guys still got routine maintenance and everything.
That's, um, all, everything that, that you got was all parts. For that piece of equipment, that doesn't, that doesn't include our labor. Um, you know, a couple twenty-one hundred dollar costs, two thousand, that was taken down and fixed, so, and without ever. We're, it's not good. So, I mean, if it's down for two weeks, you know, we buy all the counties when we can. Um, turn down use another, another skid loader to get by, but. If we can, if we can get back to the original plan, wants to purchase a new one every year and then trade it in. And that would cost us five thousand dollars a year. We can spread that out in CIP. We would know. Exactly where we are here a year instead of having a thirty thousand dollar or forty thousand dollar jump in there. I think that would be better, which is my opinion, but. Um, yeah, we're, this one is, it's died on us quite a few times, um, compared to the last, I think we've had one or two before. Um, but it's, it's been a, it's been a maintenance nightmare for us. Um. And if we do switch over and get one every year, it's under warranty all year, uh, we don't have to put tires on it. If something happens, we call the dealer, we take it down there, uh, it spreads out to the CIP and I think that with this piece of equipment, that's. Kind of where we want to be at. And that's what we originally wanted to do, but the CIP got tight. We kind of panicked. Well, we held on to it for two, three years and thought it was gonna jump. Um, the reason that we're choosing, but one of the questions Jeff has is about what about lease compared to purchasing new. So, the, the guy told me that the lease is gonna be higher because we have the opportunity to buy it under state debt, which is twenty percent on average discount. So that gives us off to a good start right away. So we buy it cheaper than the average person. We turn around and trade it in a year later. They're making money on that resale because they're already. You know, getting it cheaper for us. Um, so they do have with several other cities. As far as hours, we'll have, you know, a rough number, but calculated out our hours on what we had, but average something where they want to be at. Um, so we're kind of looking at getting a trade-in and maybe not ending up with such a long situation and, uh. So from there. After four years, this thing is a London now. So how, how confident are you that the new one that we get is gonna be okay? As long as I'm not paying repair bills and maybe get a replacement unit to use it. While this one's down, I feel a lot better. Are there other products, similar products? I was tell, tell Jeff this there. It's like you got, you know, you have John there, you got Case, Cap. Uh, they all have skid loaders, but they don't have this type of versatile unit where it's got all wheels steer. It's got the bucket on it. Uh, high-flow hydraulics. They got the corner in the market. I don't know how it's a patent or what, but, um, Plainview sticks with the Bay City who's got one last year. They came and used ours and you're like, wow, it's better than sitting in the skid loader for twelve, sixteen hours and you can use it for so many other things, so they switched to it. But now they're like, man, this is, it's a maintenance nightmare because obviously there's no room to work in it when it doesn't break. Um, it's just like a skid loader, but, uh. If I can get out from under the, kind of, spend a three or four thousand dollars a year, which impacts my other budget item, that'd be a lot better.
Yeah, tools.
Uh, like attachments?
Yeah, attachments.
Yep. The only thing that we would trade in normally is a bucket. Uh, so. That was one of the questions we talked about, street commissioner, why don't I just keep my bucket and save on costs? Why don't I get less on trade-in because they're gonna have to put a new bucket on the unit and sell it? Or my cutting is just half worn out, so I might as well just get a bucket. Three or four thousand dollars package. Yeah, so.
Your data showed that, you know, but it was pretty much constant, like two, three thousand dollars a year. Isn't fair to. And then start paying five thousand a year. Isn't it fair to say that you're gonna be paying more five thousand dollars a year? For, for maintenance or just to have this thing that what you're paying now?
I would, I would look at it at the bottom time and then our leader's not in that. You know, I might have a guy for two days staring at the part trying to find that program wire that's way inside. Which I've, I've experienced that process yet, but, um, yeah, it's. It's kind of a try and see type deal too. I don't know. I mean, I won't be paying any maintenance costs on it.
Well, do they, that's what I was gonna ask. Is that five thousand dollar cover for the year?
There's oil changes and everything. If it's under warranty, I mean, we'll grease it down. We'll spend a half hour greasing it.
But you still got the oil changes, regular routine maintenance, so that's gonna be what, five hundred bucks a year you're paying?
Yeah. One oil change a year or something.
Well, that's, that doesn't sound right. That's not what the manufacturer.
No, we're doing backups. We don't care.
You're probably, probably part of the deal, which you do all routine maintenance.
Maybe. So essentially, we're trading in, and we're trading in an annual basis and our costs would be five thousand to buy a new one. And we'd be under warranty continually with a new.
That gives you stability in use and budget.
Yep.
Where you extended the zone?
Yeah, right.
I'll just add that this was in our twenty twenty-three capital improvement project, and as of right now, we haven't made any cuts. This did come in a little higher than what we budgeted for next year, um, but I think it's the thin what we've got budgeted that. We've got the budget.
It's in the CIP.
It's in the CIP for next year. I don't. I don't know when we do that. I think we'll probably approve the next year CIP officially at the end of the year, but you guys have, this was presented. By Tony to me two years ago, so it's not, to me, I'm not surprised because you had, you had put this, planned this and built it into your budget for quite some time, so.
And there's a discrepancy between the two pieces of paper with what Jeff caught this morning. Uh, trade-in price is actually. Thirty thousand instead of one six, I remember that, right? Because we just paid another two thousand dollar bill.
I won't repurchase it.
Thanks, Tim. First, we have a second from John. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thanks, Tony. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, right. So we removed the actual worker, approval of the worker, and I didn't add it as a secondary action, so. So item ten, one point five, we need to actually look at that work order item that was up in consent. So that was consent item from ten. And questions were related to the, the figure. Um, but we would have a, we could entertain a motion to approve that twenty twenty-three athletic park relocation project work order, which includes the final design and scope of the.
Second.
First from Dean, second from, uh.
What are you from?
Tim. This is the item that was pulled because you had a question, as did Brian and I. So this is the actual work order itself.
We talked about it and forgot to do anything.
We didn't do anything.
So we're, we're backtracking to the, the part of the item.
So we have motion and a second. Do you have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thanks. Sorry, I, I get easily distracted when we remove things from the consent agenda, so I'll do for that. All right, and we have our second reading of the Gerald property rezon request. We have a staff memo, um, standard planning. And so this rezones. Uh, the, uh, Joe personal from, uh, rural, I'm gonna be after the, uh. After rural residential growth transitional to R one low density residential, and this practice has been to the. Plan and commission prior with, uh, recommendations from planning.
Yeah, we didn't have any issues with the rezoning.
The plan and commission unanimously recommended that city council amend section three or five city code to rezon this to what, R one. We have a motion from Dean. We have a second. Second, John, please. Yeah, discussion, go ahead, Craig.
I don't have any objection to the Fitzgerald thing, but I do have a concern. That the standard length for cul-de-sac is fifteen hundred feet. That's what's recommended, not to exceed fifteen hundred feet. So right now, River Drive South, and I lived on it for seventeen years, is forty-five hundred feet. So three times the recommended length maximum. And the problem with that is. If the roadway is ever blocked, um, it may be difficult even getting emergency vehicles to the far end wherever they're needed. This can happen if you have a tornado or a big rainstorm, certain, some, they're knocking down trees. And so those are one of the concerns. When you're out in the, in, in rural area, you usually don't have very many farmsteads. Uh, so there are longer cul-de-sacs up in rural area, but in this, this is a, this is a, an urban area. We're ready to be adding. With the Fitzgerald. Edition, we're gonna be adding the possibility of more homes up there, so the problem could get worse. So I'm thinking, how do we solve this problem? So. We talked at one time about linking up River Drive South with what used to be route and Lake Drive. I don't know what it's called. It's got a name. Uh, or there's a, another route that can get back to. Iowa. I'm thinking that for the future, if we're going to allow the, the magic development to go on, we really need to think about getting another, another end opened up.
Yeah, so Craig, we talked about this at planning, so by approving these thirteen blocks, I think they are, if I remember correctly, twelve, thirteen. If they put in any more, you're requiring for the road. Too high a lot.
Well, what I'm saying is, I guess, that's good. So we're already stressing.
Well, I mean, I know there's a couple of comments about that, but, I mean, outside of this being a dead end, I mean. The width is just like any other city street. You try to do this down Penn Street, you're gonna have the same issue with you parking on both sides and trying to get emergency vehicles through. All right. Otherwise, I don't, I mean, this is desperately needed by Wabashaw more than anything in the world is having, building a lot, so. I think we considered that if you put any more in, you have to put a road in or two, which there are connectivity points proposed.
Okay, I understand. I still think that the city should be considering. An outlet for River Drive South. So I lived on the short end of River Drive and then I only had point two tenths of a mile to go from my house to Augustine. But the problem was that I had seven tenths of a mile of housing coming at me, and so by the time they're all in a hurry to go to work, whatever. Beginning on, they're going faster than thirty miles an hour. So it's, it, it is a, it's a traffic habit as well. But I just think we should consider opening up that other end sometime in the future. That's all I wanted to say.
I think there's a private ownership there that refuses that connectivity. Otherwise, it might, might have happened a long time ago.
We have the power. It's not.
Says the only member of leading councils.
Yeah.
Did actually get brought, brought up sort of at the top of the, but. Yeah, um.
So I think we've got. So we're built, to, to address your concerns somewhat, that, that, um, that aspect of it is built into this, um, this memo. So with planning's, uh, unanimous recommendation, do we have a motion to?
There's a first and second.
Okay, thank you. Who called it? Just so. Thank you. Dean.
Dean.
John, we're good. All right, all those in favor?
Can I have one more? Is there, is there any issue or any, uh? Where do we make sure that the developer has a developer agreement with the city for these blocks?
They're on it and we'll approve it in December.
Um, are we gonna, we're gonna be able to review it, obviously. I mean, my concern is that it's how these lots are gonna be, houses are gonna be built on these lots and they're not gonna be bought in hell. Because that defeats the whole purpose of this.
But I mean. I'm not sure that's an aspect of the development agreement, but.
But should be. I mean, I think that's what Christie did or somebody had recommended as being part of the development agreement, because that's where you would have to put it.
Uh, Katie, you wanna light this?
Then Chrissy's online here.
So today, we're, we're being asked to use the, 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 right, why does it force them online process? Um, they've already actually used their, their final plan application. We're going through the review process as Brian and I are, um. Going through the development of the development contract. Development contract will, um, focus upon the public improvements that are part of the project and construction of the lot. So they will come in and build the lots up and put them, um, average and some for sale. Um, once that sale happens, we'll be on builder, the owner of that lot to review that home inspection.
Within a certain amount of time?
You know, the, the development contract will only focus on the public improvements and getting the lots ready for sale.
Well, well, I'm afraid we're gonna end up with thirteen empty lots there that already don't, no houses are, because people bought them just to meet a longer view of structure.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at now. You're looking at a bean field right now.
Um, I'm just saying.
Oh, I agree, I.
And to be clear, we've got two items before us. The first is the rezon, which we have a first and a second for, which you probably could, could, could call the question, have that addressed. Then we've got the plaque, the actual plaque, initial plaque. If there's any clarifying questions, we can come back to Katie. So the first and the second, any further discussion about the rezon? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, that, then we have to go to the next item related, which is the actual plaque. And with that, again, kind of some of the same information from planning, um, as Katie described, it's gonna talk. Um, as Katie described, it's going to talk about the public utilities aspect of it. Um, I know that there was a development piece mentioned in here. Um, again, adopted unanimously by the planning and staff recommendations, the planning commission helped us to plan to recommend city council approve the Fitzgerald second edition preliminary plat with listed engineering and planning conditions, using the three conditions. Final construction plan inspection should be submitted with the final plat and be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to construction. Improvements shall meet the general requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance. Drainage, number two, drainage and utilities and locations and widths need to be verified once construction plans are finalized. And three, we assume the city will be considering entering into a development agreement and securing the associated letter of credit from the developer for the public improvements in accordance with the city's subdivision ordinance. So not being familiar with subdivision ordinance is very aspect of that ordinance that we addressed Jeff's concern. So any further questions or actually we can entertain a motion, get into discussion? We have a motion from Dean. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
We have a second from John. Okay, any further discussion on this item and the conditions recommended by staff?
So a development agreement, we could put I wouldn't do it, but I don't know.
Christie, do you have any thoughts on that?
Could you hear the question, Christie, the concern addressed?
Yes, I I did.
That the that the lots actually do become useful and and are built in a certain timeframe so that the all the utility effort is not in vain essentially, so that we actually end up with with built homes.
Correct. I wouldn't have, I I've never seen that put in in it.
Okay, hold on. It's muted. Okay, try it again.
Sorry, um, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I I it wouldn't be something that I have seen in any development agreement um in any of the communities I've worked for. It would be difficult, I would think, to try to say they have to be sold by a specific time. I think the intent is actually several of these lots actually, folks are very anxious to buy them from what I've heard from Brian and from Bill uh Fitzgerald, so they do intend to to build these. Um, it's something I guess we could look into and provide for you at the final plat stage, but I've certainly never seen this done in another development agreement.
Thanks for that, Christine.
I believe we did it one time where we.
Any further clarifying questions or discussion before we vote? All right, with those uh, with the uh, first and a second for the recommendations that staff has made to include these uh, conditions, one, two, and three, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks very much, Bill, for being with us, and uh, we are.
Bye, Christie. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Nice to see you. There we go. All right, and so we, we have our donations as the last item. We did not put a housing fee. That was important, yeah.
Sorry, okay, good.
Yeah, any questions? Any questions on that? Yeah, no, we're moving forward. That's that's a little bit of pressure prompted activity. We want to really make sure that's on the ground. And we're still hopeful about it for now, so we don't have to use a car for dollars. All right, so the donations, which are very generous this month as often the case, um, we have to the library, one hundred dollars from James and Hunt State Farm Insurance, ninety dollar donation from the sale of Jan Marchik's prints, which are on display at the library, to the Wabashaw Amulets, donation of Motorola portable radios by American Royal Healthcare valued at fifteen hundred dollars, and to the Wabashaw Fire Department, the donation of thirty new helmets from the Wabashaw Fire Week Association valued at ninety-nine hundred dollars. Do you have a motion to approve the donations?
I will.
Second by Tim, second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, any further announcements?
I have one question.
Yes, Dean.
Are we paid the donation yet or?
Want to talk about that? We're going to.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think um, basically where we're at with that is um, we've got a nice marketing brochure, and we were trying to, we just need to reconvene the steering committee and just say, what are the donation levels going to look like? What do you get for a donation? Um, yeah, so we need to, and I think, I don't know if you're part of that group, but um, I'm meeting with Chad on Thursday. Um, and then I'd like to reconvene the steering committee to decide on next steps there, so.
And obviously, there's an element of every big capital campaign like that, that you don't want to ask for gifts and not be explicit about what the whole project needs because you might get a fifty dollar gift from somebody who could actually afford and would desire to give more than just the impact of the project. So that brochure is really nice. It's coming along. It's got real pictures of real Wabashaw folks using the facility. Do we have a, any other announcements or we could entertain a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Dean.
Sorry.
All right, Kim with first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, Dean, this is the brochure. We just needed to decide on the donation tiers. Scott from Mitchell?
Oh, great. Okay, cool.